Hello, all you awesome people. Sorry about the few minutes delay on getting going this morning. And we'll see if people end up coming on, and I'm doing this a little differently today because on my phone instead of on my computer. So I'm praying that the connection is good. I've got one person on, and so I apologize about being five minutes late. Y'all get to see me with my American hat on today because we're going into our elections, right? I'm being all patriotic today with the hat. So anyway, can you guys hear me? Type a little comment to let me know if you guys can hear me. And I pray everything is okay. I'm doing this a little bit different. I'm doing this one on my cellphone instead of my computer. And so, but I'm excited about starting this Bible study of discerning the Spirit realm that we are doing together today. And so anyway, hey, Jennifer, you can hear me. Awesome, awesome, awesome. So y'all get to see me in my patriotic hat today, although it causes there to be a cast over my eyes. I wasn't thinking about that. But anyway, I wanted to be all patriotic today with our, with American hat considering we're going into the election. So Jennifer, hello, and Terry, hello. And so I'm excited about starting our Bible study on my new book, Discerning the Spirit Realm. So we have more and more people that are coming on. Like I said, I apologize for being just a little bit late this morning. Decided to set this up a little different on my cellphone and with the lighting and stuff. So we'll see how it goes. And we will, this time and with it this way. But anyway, I know that there are a few more people that will be coming on. So I'm just going to give it some time, just a little bit longer before I, before I dive into this teaching time of discerning the spirit realm. And I'm teaching from my new book. And so all of you that, you know, all of you that, you know, haven't ordered the book, you can order it at ChristianHarvestintl.org. Or you can also go to, you can also go to Amazon. You can go to Barnes and Noble. You can go to Kindle. So for those of you that haven't ordered the book yet, you can go to our website, Christian Harvest, I'll say it again, intl.org. Yay, good morning. Hey, and so, and so, hey, you, how are you? It's good to see you, Ms. Sandy. Sandy, is that you? Are you Sandra on YouTube? Anyway, but so here we are, and more peeps will be jumping on and for this, for this. So, but I'm going to pray and we're going to get going. And if you haven't ordered the book, be sure to order the book, guys. Here, it is, we've gotten so many great responses from people that have already been reading it. You know, discernment is not a gift that is taught a whole lot in the body of Christ. And so I was telling everyone that's coming on late, y'all get to see Patriotic Becca today. Melanie Taylor, good morning. Sandra is Sandy, my good friend. Good morning, guys. And so anyway, this, this is me today in my, in my American baseball cap because we're praying for our nation during this strategic time, right? So I'm going to pray and we're going to dive into the Bible study. And guys, we're going to be doing this for several weeks. Like we'll do one again next Thursday at the same time. And then the following Thursday, I believe, at the same time. And then I think the week of the next week, which will be that, that Thursday would have been the 19th, we're actually going to do it on the 20th on that Friday because I am teaching here at Lou Ingalls School in Colorado Springs on the 19th. So in his prayer school that they have started, so I'll be teaching at that. So guys, here we are, right? And I am going to pray and we're going to dive into this teaching. So Holy Spirit, I thank you for this time. Lord, I thank you that you will empower us in this gift of discernment. Lord, I pray that everything that you want shared will be shared this morning. And Lord, that they will all be empowered to fully be everything that you have called them to be within this gift of discernment. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, so you know, I, when we're talking about this gift of discernment, you know, I'm going to start by asking you all a few questions, which I do actually in the intro of the book as well. But you know, how many of you have ever been in a room where others are rejoicing over something that's going on, but yet in your spirit, you're kind of like, me? You know, I don't know. I'm just not a hundred percent jumping on board with this. Hey, Michelle Brown, good morning. And so, you know, have, have you ever been in that kind of situation where that happens? Or sometimes have you watched doors fly open, right? For someone, meaning they're being promoted and, but something about you, you just don't feel at ease about this situation. And you're thinking, I, I want to be happy and I, I'm not against anyone. Lord, what, you know, what is this going on? What is this check? Okay, I realize that now I've got a shadow on my head with my baseball cap. And so anyway, next week I won't wear a baseball cap. But then also, have you ever felt the presence of angels? Has that ever happened where you have felt the presence of angels? Or have you felt the presence of demons? So are you able to look at someone and know, oh, their countenance is just off? Something just isn't right? Or you look at an individual and you just instantly have a knowing about them and their purpose and their calling and their destiny and their gifting? Do you, do you see and feel when the angelic is active? Do you see and do you feel those things? Are you able, now I do this, all these things I am asking and listing, I do all of these. Okay, so are you able to know who or what is influencing the spiritual atmosphere of a city, of a region, or a nation? And so, like I said, all of these things I do a lot. What about this? Can you feel the direction of the Holy Spirit, the way he is moving and wanting to move in a meeting? Jennifer's yes, Sandy is yes. All of these different things that some, many of us can say yes to, all of them? And many of us can say yes to, some of them. And so all of these things encompass the gift of discernment. Michelle's like, yes, 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 yes. And so, you know, a discernment, it is a gift. And we're going to talk about the foundations of discernment. I'm going to be teaching from chapter one today in my book. But you know, it is a gift that many have, but it is really not widely taught. Why? Because many function in it, but at the same time, it's sometimes we have to get language, learn to get language to communicate what we're seeing and we're feeling and we're sensing. And then let's be really honest, to some, when we share the discernment, who are, if we're sharing it even with leaders who don't have the gift, they're like, okay, how do you know that? And how can I make a decision based on that? Because this is all in the spirit realm. This isn't in, you know, what I'm seeing unfold right now in front of their eyes in the natural realm. And let me give you, let me give you a great example of what happens with my husband and I. Now, now Greg does have the gift of discernment. Let me see if I can turn this. If I do this, y'all are going to see the glare, but that's okay, in my glasses because they're non-glare. The glasses are not non-glare. But anyway, I want you to see my face. That's a little bit better since I have the cap on. But listen, let me talk about what happens with my husband and I quite a bit. I'll say to him, do you feel that? And he'll say, feel what? I'm like, there's such a heaviness in the atmosphere. Don't you feel that? And he's like, no, I'm not, I'm not feeling that. And or I'll even say, you know, you're not, you're not feeling that heaviness? And he's like, no. And then I'll say, well, do you hear that? There are other times, he's like, hear what? I'm like, don't you hear the sound of the worship of the angels and partnership with what we're doing right now? Do you hear, do you hear the sound of the angels? No, I don't hear the angels worshiping with us. Or then sometimes it might even, you know, be, be something like this. You know, do you, do you see that person? Man, they really, really, they got an issue. I just see something on their countenance, like they're, there's, they're just, they're not happy. There's no joy. Do you, don't you, don't you see that, dear? Don't you, don't you feel that? And, and there we go, got to get it straight. And he, and literally he'll say, no, I'm not feeling that. Now, let me say this, Greg does have the gift of discernment and he has a strong gift of wisdom that goes with that gift of discernment, but it functions very differently. See, all the scenarios are things that you hear, there are things that you see, there are things that you feel, and all of those are also part of the gift of discernment. And so these are key phrases that occur when someone is operating in, in that gift of discernment in that way. Then you got this, this, this is the hardest one. I don't know how I know, but I just know that I know. And I'm telling you, this is what's going on. And I know that I know that I know. And if you can't even say how you know, you just know. And I tease about this and we'll talk about this further in the study, not today. But the reality is, my friend Eddie Smith, he calls that discernment, the sixth sense. And so listen, guys, when, when we're talking about discernment, the sixth sense, I'm not talking about New Age, but really it's like discernment, there's just this knower thing. We're, we're not talking about New Age. I know sometimes we say that, but it's really true. The enemy has really kind of taken some of these phrases people of darkness have of what discernment, it's like you just know, you just have that knowing, even though you can't tell how you know it. And so these are all ways that the gift of discernment will work. And so let me give you a great example of what happened with Greg and I. Those of you that have read the book already or started it, you're going to be familiar with this story. But like we, I had just returned from Russia and we were having a family fun night out. We're going to go out to eat, we're going to go to a movie, we're going to do all these awesome things, right? And we were in a city that we did not live in. We were in Colorado, but we were in a city that we did not live in to have dinner and to have a family fun night. And we go to this movie theater to watch a movie. And it wasn't one that had been attacked. It wasn't ones, one of the ones that has had, you know, like massacres or anything like that that we've seen in the state of Colorado. But we get the tickets online, we get to the movie theater to watch the movie. And I literally, guys, I am telling you, I, I, I'm just uneasy, just totally uneasy. And so what then happens is my husband turns and he looks at me and, and he says, are you okay? And I'm like, listen, I just got back from Russia. I was preaching in services where there was the KGB, I'm just saying. And they were listening. And I said, I never felt unsafe. I am telling you, I feel more unsafe here than I did there. And so my, all of my daughters also have a gift of discernment. So my oldest daughter looks and said, Dad, she's right. I don't know if we need to be here. And my other daughters are like, yeah, Dad, you know? And, and jokingly, we say, because Rebecca, our daughter as well, she has the gift of discernment. But that night she wasn't feeling what we were feeling, she was sensing it, but she's wanting to have fun at this movie. So she said, can't you turn that off? We're like, no, we wish we could. And so that night we were feeling it. And so Greg said, okay, and we gather in a huddle and we pray. Lord, are we sensing something in this city that is an open door and over the territory? Are we sensing that? Or Lord, are you trying to warn us that we literally are in danger if we, if we stay in this theater tonight? We all listened to the Lord and said, oh, it's just something in the city and the region. So we all went to the movie, had a great time, watched the movie, didn't feel unsafe, enjoyed the movie, and went home that night. And so this is how, how the gift of discernment oftentimes operates. And so let's talk about it. Let's talk about discernment defined. Says, every believer has received grace gifts. I'm reading from 1 Peter 4, verses 10 through 11. Sorry about that, guys. 1 Peter 4, verses 10 through 11. Every believer has received grace gifts, so use them to serve one another as faithful stewards of the many colored tapestry of God's grace. For example, if you have a speaking gift, speak as though God were speaking his words through you. If you have a gift of serving, do it passionately with the strength God gives you. So that in and God alone will be glorified through Jesus Christ, for to him belong the power and the glory forever throughout all the ages. Amen, right? So every believer, all of us have received abilities, administrations, enablements, functions, what, what we want to call them, gifts of the Holy Spirit. And the truth is, is all of these gifts and abilities are given to profit all, right? And so we are the church, we are a living body. So I'm going to read to you another scripture from Romans 12, 4 through 5. It says, in the human body, there are many parts and organs, each with a unique function. And so it is in the body of Christ. For though we are many, we've all been mingled into one body in Christ. This means that we are all vitally joined to one another with each contributing to the others. Hey, Ms. Brenda, I see you too. Good morning, my friend. And so we all will have different gifts. I believe the Holy Spirit can cause all of us to function in gifts of the Spirit. But I'm going to give you a definition of a spiritual gift by Peter Wagner. It's the special attribute given by the Holy Spirit to every member of the body of Christ according to God's grace for use within the context of the body. So I believe we can all see people healed. I believe we can all prophesy, but some of us might function in these different areas. I believe, and I teach in this book, that we also can learn to discern. But there might be some that it's just, whoo, just a part of how God has made them and it's functioning when they're in the Spirit, or it's just with them everywhere that they go. So you and I are part of the living body with Jesus, and he is the head. And so God's marvelous grace imparts to each one of us the varying gifts and ministries that are uniquely ours. And so it's so awesome that our heavenly Father has made us in this many colored tapestry of grace gifts that we are to steward. So this is why I'm writing on discernment, because it's very rarely ever taught. And we want to increase in this, we want to steward it wisely. We want to mature in this gift and, and we want to know how to function, not only so we can function well in it, we want to come into victory, just like the subtitle of the book says, the key to powerful prayer and victorious warfare, right, right here? And so sometimes with this gift of discernment, we learn to push away or to shun those things that we're healing, hearing, or feeling, or sensing. And so my prayer is through this Bible study, through the reading of this book as it gets out there, it will help people so grow and mature in this and, and, and talk about language that we don't talk about a lot. How do we see, feel, hear, sense demonic principality? If it's Jezebel, what does that look like? What is that, what do we see? What do we hear? What do we feel? If it, what do we, how do we see and hear and feel when the angels are around us? See, many of us are discerning and might not even know it. Many of you on here are saying, yes, 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 yes. So obviously you guys are like, woo-hoo, she's speaking my language and you have the gift of discernment. So let's talk about the ability to discern. I, I know you feel like you're on a Bible drill today, but as we start this study and as you go through this book, and guys, I, I'm going to ask you a favor real quick before I forget, because I dive into teaching. If this book is blessing you, please write a review on Amazon for us and let me know or, and that way we can share that. And if this Bible study is blessing you, please pass it on, you know, share it with others. Diane, thank you, reading the book now, so good, thank you. I know many of you that are on have already told me, but please write a review on Amazon and share with your friends and share this Bible study with your friends as well. But let's talk about the ability to discern. 1 Corinthians 12, 7 through 11. It says, a spiritual gift is given to each of us so we can help each other. We've already talked about that. So to one person, the Spirit gives the ability to give wise advice, that's wisdom. To another, the same Spirit gives a message of spiritual knowledge, words of knowledge. The same Spirit gives great faith, woo, to another. My oldest daughter Kendall has incredible gift of faith. And woo, I'm just saying, when she prays, when she talks to us, faith level goes, goes up, up, up. So, and to someone else, one Spirit gives the gift of healing. He gives one person the power to perform miracles and another the ability to prophesy. He gives someone else the ability to discern whether a message is from the Spirit of God or from another spirit, the ability to discern. So you can keep going through that gift. It talks about speaking and tongues, all of these things. It's 1 Corinthians 12, 7 through 11. So discernment is a revelatory gift. You know, someone is already asking, what do we do if we discern a Jezebel spirit and someone we need to interact with? You know, I talk about that in the book actually, and I will give an example at the end of someone that was operating, that I had an encounter with many years ago. And so by the end of this, I'll give a testimony of that and do some teaching. All right, good question. And so discernment is a revelatory gift, and it is one of the nine gifts that is mentioned here through the Holy Spirit. And so there are many, many, like we already said, who shun or do not accept discernment of those who clearly function in the ability. Why? Because sometimes people have abused it. We think because we're discerning something that we automatically become everyone's Holy Spirit. Guys, we got to learn how to mature in that and function in that. But then, you know, they don't, sometimes it's like we said earlier, they really don't want to hear what we're discerning because then there's a responsibility to, you're welcome, you're welcome. Then there is a responsibility for that person to try to maneuver in that. And, and they're like, how do I lead based off of discernment? And so, and like I said, a lot of people will look at me and say, can't you turn that off? And my answer is no. I tell people, asking me to turn off the gift of discernment, especially when the Lord and the Holy Spirit is ramping it up for a certain reason, is like asking someone with the gift of faith not to believe, asking someone with the gift of prophecy not to prophesy, asking someone, right, with, with the gift to teach and to preach, not to teach and to preach. Now, there are times we don't share our discernment, but I can't turn it off because sometimes God gives us that discernment so we can pray and we can intercede. And sometimes he just gives it to us so we learn, so we know how to maneuver through a situation until there's an opportunity to speak the truth of what we're discerning. And so when we look at discernment, the Greek word for discernment in this scripture is diakresis. Now listen to this, guys. The ability to judge or decide, the ability to judge the genuineness of gifts that come from the Spirit and those that do not, the gift to differentiate the word of God proclaimed by a true prophet from that of a satanic deceiver. So I'm not telling you to become everybody's Holy Spirit. I'm not telling you to be one of these on social media that goes around and jumps on people's pages trying to, don't do that, don't, trying to tear them down because of discernment. What I'm, what I'm saying is, we really have the ability, and that's what I'm saying. There are times that I will be with people and they are teaching. And I just, there, red flags, alarms are just going off in my spirit. And I, I ask the Holy Spirit, why am I feeling that? Or there are times we're watching somebody on the media. Well, that's pretty normal occurrence. And what we're looking going, that's not true, that's not true, that's not true. We, you know, we just know those things and we're not being critical or judgmental. If we are going to be the voice during this most historic time, this new era, what we're all prophesying, what I prophesy, most historic time of Christianity, we, the church, have to be able to learn to discern what is true and what is false. We have to know how to do due diligence to back up what we are discerning as well. All right? And so it's an enablement of the Spirit. This is an enablement of the Spirit, and it refers to supernatural power or insight to know what is of the Lord and to detect and expose demonic and false strategies, teachings, and activities. So I'm going to say this very, 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 very emphatically, that it is very important for us to know, excuse me, guys, the word of God. We must have the word of God alive, and my Bible upside down, alive in us and know it, know it, know it, know it, know it. And have a good foundation on the truth of the word of God. And so to this question, there was a prayer group that, that I was, I was involved in a, at a large prayer ministry. And this was many, many years ago. It was very international and focused. And sometimes I was asked to lead, sometimes I wasn't. Sometimes leadership would rotate to other people. And I was, and I, I share these testimonies because I want to keep it nameless and faceless. But there was an individual that was being touted as a prophet. And everything, and that, every time this person would get up and they would begin to speak or they would begin to pray, there was always just this bent of control and manipulation, having to be seen and heard. But then also, not only that, but then, then using the gift publicly to, to demean others who were really flowing in a true gift of prophecy or intercession and, and trying to expose things in their lives that legitimately were not there in order to gain the upper hand, to say, I'm the most gifted of all the ones here and my voice must be the one listened to. So the, so when this person, it's EC, I don't, I don't, anyway, is asking about, you know, a Jezebel spirit, what this, this was definitely, definitely witchcraft control and manipulation and to be honest, was, was very much operating in a Jezebel spirit. Now, I talk about this in the book. This is why I want everyone to get this. And I talk about a Jezebel spirit in chapter eight. But one thing we have to be careful of is we don't call someone, oh, it's Consuela. Hi, Consuela. We don't call, we don't call someone that's operating under a Jezebel spirit, a Jezebel. That's not what we do. It's a Jezebel spirit is a demonic spirit or territorial spirit, just like an anti-Christ spirit is, just like the spirit of witchcraft is. And we'll get into that later in this teaching. So with this individual, I would say they were definitely crossing over into a place of a power play of control and manipulation that was definitely manifesting Jezebel spirit behavior, demonic spirit behavior that was operating through this individual. So they, I mean, and, and so I'm, I'm sitting there and I go, you know, when I, I, sometimes I'm leading, sometimes other people, because this is a large international ministry, it was years ago. So people would come in and every time this person would lead, red flags are going off. And I'm like, don't people see the deception? Don't people see the manipulation that is going on here? And you know, and then you think you're being critical. So you start saying, Lord, forgive me for being judgmental and critical. I want to be open. But I, the more I would pray that, the louder inside of me, I'd become more and more uncomfortable in my spirit. And so it was like the second or third time this person was leading, I thought, well, I'll go back again. And this person literally turned and then called me out and said, started calling out fear. Now, I've been set free from fear for years before that, radically set free. And you think you're set free from fear, you're not set free from fear and you're not ever going to be without my permission in a very public manner with people that I would be leading in a, you know, in the prayer time the next week. And so I'm like, this is not the Lord. So I was a lot younger. This was, this was many years ago, about, gosh, 20 years ago, a little over 20, 21. And so I was a lot younger in the Lord, in, in my experience and how to maneuver with this. So I prayed and I thought, I just got to go get this right with this person. Somehow I've offended this person. My husband said, don't do that, don't, don't, don't do that, that's not wise. That was his discernment. But I was like, I just couldn't. But I was like, I just couldn't get rid of this. I've just gotta go and ask them, have I offended them? And so, um, I went and met with this person privately and just said, if I've, have I offended you? Or is there something going on? And they looked at me and they said, well, I know you're jealous of me. I wasn't jealous of this person in any way, shape or form. And I said, well, if I'm not jealous of you, but if I've given you that impression, I'm sorry. But no, I'm not jealous. It just seems that there's tension. You are calling out fear in me, I've taken that to the Lord. I don't, I don't see that there's any fear, but I just, there's tension. So this person said, oh, you know, you know, no, and, and, you know, um, there's no tension. It's just your jealousy. And I said, again, no, I'm not jealous of you. Not jealous of you, that, that's, that's not what's there. Um, but if I've given you that impression, I apologize for that. If I've done that in any way, shape or form, I just want to make sure I haven't offended you. No, no, no. And then this individual said to me, and let's just keep this a secret because you know, the leaders who are, are involved in this ministry have already spoken to me about you. And they are watching you because they do think you have problems with jealousy. So if they find out we've had this discussion, it might harm your, your, uh, relationship with a lot of people in this group. And I thought, oh, my Lord, my husband was right. When that came out of that person's mouth, I was like, that was so controlling and manipulative. And, um, and so I left that meeting and I told my husband, he goes, you shouldn't have done that. They, they will immediately, which is true. I, I actually went to talk to the leaders myself after that to say what had occurred because I didn't want it to be reported from that person. But before I could get to that lead meeting the next day, this person had already called them on the phone first thing in the morning, saying, you need to know this. And she has come to me and admitted her jealousy and told me she's jealous, what, you know? And, and then, and then what then happened is it caused some of the leaders in that group to be very suspicious of me and very cautious of me. And so, because when I went to tell them, they're like, yeah, they already, she already called or this person already called and already told, uh, told us about this situation and that you're struggling with jealousy. I said, no, 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 that's not what happened. But you see how there was this whole power play? And so then I, I would, I still would go to the prayer group. When I was asked to lead, I would still lead, but the Lord said, just bade the situation in intercession and pray that it will fully get exposed where the leaders around can see it as well. And it got exposed and they did see it. And so I'm making a long story really short. And then this, then the leaders came to me and said, you've been very quiet since we spoke to you on the phone about this individual, what, what occurred between the two of you. What are you discerning? Can you tell us what God's really showing you about this individual? What is it that you're discerning? So at that moment, I told them, I see, I was one of the leaders in the group, but not the leader leader. And so, um, and they said, okay. And they confronted the individual and said, we really think you have an issue here. We need to take you through deliverance. And as soon as that person was confronted, they bolted and they left. Uh, because now we're all elitist and a part of, part of a superior cult trying to bring correction to people that we shouldn't bring correction. And so, um, yay, I'm so, Michelle, I'm glad that you're on. So that was kind of a in-depth story that I just shared right there of a situation. And so that was a very much a witchcraft manipulation, even if it wasn't a full-blown Jezebel spirit, very similar to what a full-blown Jezebel spirit operates in. Very much a power play, very much. So to be honest, yes, it was witchcraft and a Jezebel spirit in operation. Here's one thing that I tell people, you cannot appease somebody that's embraced a Jezebel spirit and is wanting to operate in it and doesn't even see that they need freedom from it. So if, if they're trying to come in a way that is harming, don't try to appease a Jezebel spirit, what you, uh, in a way that becomes a superior, where they, that person operating with that can then do, you know, make a superior move. Don't do what I did. You know, you really want to pray and you want to ask the Lord, Lord, oh, how do I handle this situation? If you are the leader and you're leading a group and you think that this person, you know, you are the top leader in that group, um, you know, then you might want to pull the person aside and just talk to them and say, listen, I think you have some issues and you need some, you might need some freedom here. Uh, but then also, if you're not the one in leadership, uh, you pray that what is happening with that Jezebel spirit will fully be exposed and where it can be seen and it can be dealt with. And in your intercession time, you just go and you say, I, I bind, uh, all the assignments of this Jezebel spirit right now in Jesus' name and I take authority over it. And Lord, right now I speak that this Jezebel spirit will not harm this group. Let, let it fully be exposed for what it is. And be, and don't give them an open door into your life, uh, to manipulate and to control. Okay, I know that's a very abbreviated teaching on that, but at some point, I will jump on and do a whole teaching on the Jezebel spirit that will help even further. So I pray, Consuela, that that gives you some, some wisdom. And so, so the, and I want to also talk about the wise, uh, in, uh, in heart are called discerning. And it says in Proverbs 1621, the one with the wise heart is called discerning. And speaking sweetly to others makes your teaching even more convincing. And so, um, you know, that is, with that marriage thing, that is a marriage counseling question. Uh, you know, that, that really, you know, uh, we'll just have to pray in that situation. Um, you know, with marriage counseling issues like that, you know, um, you know, that to me, that really should be happening with the pastor that y'all are in relationship with. And I know you're saying going to the pastor with false accusations. So, you know, really just be praying that those things that are being done in darkness, those that are deceptive will fully be exposed and brought, uh, to the light. And so, but, uh, let me keep going. The, the wise in heart are called discerning. And so I cannot express enough for the need for wisdom when operating in discernment. And it says, solid food, I'm reading from Hebrews 514. Solid food is for the mature, who because of practice have their senses trained to discern good and evil. And so when discerning, there's going to be wisdom and maturity to handle and to share the revelation in a mature way. And so we will keep talking about that in the study. This is just the foundational teaching. Um, and so just as I, as I was sharing the testimony, I was, I should have really listened to the wisdom of my husband in that situation. And I didn't. And, and so therefore it threw me into, uh, this, this season of having just really to pray and to intercede. And so, um, we are also called to carefully evaluate things in the gift of discernment. First Corinthians two, and you can read all of this, but, uh, first Corinthians two, verses one through 16 in the NIV. But it says, this is what we speak, not in words taught us by human wisdom, but in words taught us by the Spirit. Explaining spiritual realities with Spirit-taught words. I love how this is literally worded in the scripture. I'm going to say it again, by human wisdom, but in words taught by the Spirit. Explaining spiritual realities with Spirit-taught words. Wow. So the person without the Spirit does not accept the things that come from the Spirit of God, but considers them foolishness and they cannot understand them because they are discerned only through the Spirit. But the person with this, with the Spirit makes judgments. They're able to discern, they're able to discern things and perceive things. But such a person is not subject simply to human judgments or discernment. And then it goes on to say, who has known the mind of the Lord so as to instruct him? But we have the mind of Christ, right? And so when we're discerning, the Greek word in this scripture for discern is annacrono. And it means to examine, evaluate carefully, investigate, interrogate, determine and judge. So Paul is teaching all believers that, you know, that we are to be taught by the Spirit. This is why we must know the word of God so deeply and that we must be taught by the Spirit as well. We don't want the world to teach us. We can't be taught by ways of the world. We are spiritual beings. The spirit realm is more real than the physical realm. And as representatives of His kingdom, we must know and understand the vocabulary of the kingdom and the vocabulary of the Spirit. And so a lot of people will say, I don't want to know about the spirit realm. I don't, I don't want to talk about that. I, I, how do, you know, how do you know the spirit realm is so active? Cause I know that I know, I see, I hear, I feel, I sense, I, I discern. It's, it's a part of who I am. And so, you know, I tell people, listen, when I turn the light switch on, I don't know how the electricity gets there, but that light comes on. When I type an email and I send it to my friends that are in Europe and it arrives in front of them within, you know, now, 10 to 30 seconds or a minute, very quickly. And there's 2,000 words. I don't see those words floating through the atmosphere across the ocean to land on their computer screen. But somehow, some way, right, through technology and, and, you know, all of that stuff that I don't have the terms for, it arrives. But I don't see those words floating through the atmosphere, but the, those words are there and it will show up on that computer screen. So the truth is, just because some people don't see, hear, feel or sense doesn't discredit the reality of the spirit realm. We are all gifted different in a tapestry. So our gifts can be used together for the building up and edifying of the body and the equipping of the saints, because we all need each other. And so when we have this, this word, uh, annacrono, it literally means that we examine, examine, we evaluate carefully, we investigate. And, and, and meaning that we're, we're gauging the Holy Spirit. When we feel those red flags, when we sense those things, saying, Holy Spirit, is this me being judgmental or critical? Or are you trying to share, tell me something? What is it that you're trying to tell me, right? And so, you know, an engineer, a teacher, a doctor, they go to school to learn the vocabulary of the ways of their trade. So we too must learn the vocabulary and the ways of the Spirit. If we're sons and daughters of the King of kings, the Lord of lords, of our heavenly Father. And He is in the spirit realm and it's alive 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right? Seated, He's in heavenly places and throned in heaven, but He's also omniscient, omnipotent, omnipresent. And the spirit realm is the realm that He is alive in and we are alive in right now. Right now, we're alive in the spirit realm. We're physical beings that are interacting with Him in the spirit realm. We must begin to understand the language of His kingdom and of that spirit realm and do it in a way that can bless others, that can help us maneuver through situations. So we must grow in this reality in our lives. So one marks of growth and maturity in our spiritual lives is this discernment. So we're able to penetrate through the surface of things that the world is seeing and we're able to see things in a spiritual way. I've had some people say to me, you know, you shouldn't, because we're seeing in a lot of media outlets right now in our nation, lies, blatant lies. How do I know? Because I do due diligence, I listen to what they say and then I literally do due diligence of what's being said to me. I don't just embrace it as truth. I engage the Holy Spirit, but I'll do investigative work as well, right? And so, but the truth, the truth of the matter is, is that, is that we want to mature in this place to be able to see beyond what the world is saying. And it is our job as the church to do this. The lost world doesn't understand what's happening in the spirit realm when a lying spirit is fully in operation and what can happen in the atmosphere. The lying might irritate them, but not only is the lying there, but then what, what does that do in the atmosphere and in the spirit? How does that affect people? That's the job of the episcia, that's the job of the church, to have that understanding. Uh, you see unsafe people, they walk by sight and they see things, but they don't see it fully. They really are seeing nothing. They lack the depth of sight because they are spiritually blind. So Paul even tells us in Colossians 2:8, beware that no one distracts you or intimidates you in their attempt to lead you away from Christ's fullness by pretending to be full of wisdom when they're filled with endless arguments of human logic. For they operate with humanistic and clouded judgments based on the mindset of this world system and not the anointed truths of the anointed one. And so that is our job. The lost world doesn't know how to do that, but we do. So we can discern what is true and what is false. And we can give language to it and we can help people come to the understanding of truth, not judgmental, not critical, but just speaking the truth. And so, uh, so what else happens with discernment? Like I said, guys, this is just the foundational teaching of chapter one. And, and we'll, we'll go for another 15 minutes, but salvaging what is good and discarding what is useless. So Philippians 1:9 through 11. And this is my prayer, that your love may abound more and more in knowledge and depth of insight, so that you may be able to discern what is best and may be pure and blameless until the day of Christ, filled with the fruit of righteousness that comes through Jesus Christ to the glory and praise of God. All right. And so the discernment, the word discernment in this scripture is doki-mazo. And it means the testing process that salvages the good and discards the useless. So it signifies the ability to regard something as genuine or worthy on the basis of testing. So what does that mean? Based on the word of God, based on what we know to be true according to the kingdom of God and the word of God and what the Spirit is speaking to us. Now think about this, let's look at Solomon. He is a great scriptural example of this. Solomon asked for wisdom, which is also discernment. And he was young, guys, when he took the throne, he was 20 years old. That was really young back then, uh, to be in leadership. We know King Josiah was even younger, right? What was it, eight? But this was young, Solomon, this was a young age for him to reign. And his words when he praised are, show, show his feelings of concern for his lack of experience in order to operate and fulfill in this new position. And he was going to function as the vice-regent, as the king of Yahweh, right? And so we, we read that the Lord came to him in a dream and gave him the following instructions. You can read in first Kings 3:5. He said, ask for whatever you want Me to give you. God wanted to help him in his new position, right? And so this is what he answers. I'm going to, I told you all this, we're going to feel like we're in a Bible drill. But listen, first Kings 3, 7 through 12, this is what Solomon answers. Now, Lord, my God, you have made your servant king in place of my father David. But I am only a child. How many of you felt like that, Lord? I don't know, you're throwing me out here in the midst of this and woo, right? And he says, I'm only a child and do not know how to carry out my duties. Your servant is here among the people you have chosen, a great people, too numerous to count or number. So give your servant a discerning heart. Wow. To govern your people and to distinguish between right and wrong. So he asked for it. He asked, some translations say wisdom, some say a discerning heart. Then he says, for who is able to govern this great people of yours? The Lord was pleased that Solomon had asked for this. Oh my goodness, what the Lord was so pleased that he said, I asked for wisdom. I ask for a discerning heart. What the Lord was so pleased that he said, I asked for wisdom. I ask for a discerning heart. And so he was pleased and see he, and God said to him, since you have asked for this. And, and you, and not longed for life or wealth for yourself. Nor have you asked for the death of your enemies, but for discernment. And adminis- administering justice, I will do what you have asked. Powerful scripture, guys. I will give you a wise and discerning heart. So there will nev- that, so that there will never have been anyone like you. Nor will there ever be. Wow. Right? And so can you imagine the weight that was on Solomon walking in the footsteps of his father, King David? And now he's 20 and he's reigning. So he asked for the discerning heart. And in this scripture, the Hebrew word for discern is haben. And it means this, it means to pay attention, examine, realize, hear. Pay attention to information, have specialized knowledge, uh, that is effectively implemented. Teach, perceive, look closely, see with the eyes. Cunning and to have perception, there's that knower thing and judgment about what is seen. Wow. Right? And so it is evident that the Lord answered this prayer for Solomon, right? That he rebuilt, he was able to build the temple. He returned the ark of the covenant to its divinely designed home. He built his palace. He attained great wealth. He traded with nations. People would come from all over to hear of his wisdom and discernment in situations, right? However, listen, this is something that's very key. Solomon did not listen to the Lord concerning his wives and concubines from the nations. And the Lord had previously warned the children of Israel. Not to take wives and concubine from the other nations that worshiped idols. And, and, and later in Solomon's life, this is what he did. He did what the Lord asked him not to do, what the sons of Israel not to do with concubines and wives. From other nations that worship idols. Because the Lord warned them and said, if they lay with them in relations. They would succeed in turning their hearts away from the God of Israel and towards their god, gods. That's what happened with Solomon. So what, what is the lesson here, right? And we know what happened because Solomon did this when his son, uh. Became king, the, the kingdom, he didn't get to reign a long period of time. The kingdom was taken out of his hands due to the open door of the sin of his father. Uh, lining up with idolatry, because when you line up with idolatry, it's going to harm the generations to come. Therefore the son is now being harmed because of the choice that his dad made. So what's the lesson in this? Solomon was amazing, but then he goofed up on this. Here's the lesson. We must ask the Lord for increased wisdom and discernment. But also learn to walk in obedience with the Lord. And allow his continual purifying work in our lives and our hearts. So the, we ourselves, after ti- a period of time will not turn and begin to bow. Our knee to idols of our culture, but we will stay in that place of purity. And discernment of what we've asked the Lord for. So very, very important. And so I pray that this is helping you guys. I'm going to share just a quick testimony and then I'm going to pray. And then next week you're going to come back, but guys, get the book, get, get the book, Discerning the Spirit Realm, right? And Lord knows in this day and time, we have got to have wisdom. On how to discern, not only for ourselves personally, but what's happening culturally. And we have done a lot of work with First Nations people, Native Americans in our nation. And, uh, this is a consistent, uh, prayer that I voice to the Lord, just like Solomon. Lord, give me your heart, give me your discernment, your wisdom. Lord, your presence, the message and strategies that you have for the regions that I'm going into administering in. And so I had actually been going into a city and a state in Miss, uh, a city in the state of Mississippi. And we have been watching the Lord move miraculously through breakthrough. And you can read about that in, in a chapter eight of my book where I talk about this. But the Lord spoke to us to go to a location of prayer one time when I was there. And there, and it was a place where there had been hurt in a fence. From the white men to the Native Americans, to the First Nations people. And as we stood on site to pray and worship, the Lord began to move powerfully. And it, we were moving in intercession. God was beginning to heal that, that divide. God's glory presence was there. And the team all felt, we need to do a prophetic act, like let's build an altar to the Lord. Like a stone altar to, to show, like what they did in the Old Testament, to show that this has been healed and dedicating this to the Lord. Well, I was like, yeah, awesome. Let's do that because, you know, we've dealt with this and we've healed this and. And, but then I instantly felt a check in my spirit, not, not that we should build the altar, but the, but something, you know, I just felt, oh. So I said, Lord, what is that? What are you saying to me? And he said, if you build an altar made by the hands of white men at this location. It's going to be looked at as another way white men have come in and tried to put their mark. On something that is First Nations. And I said, the Lord, how do we do this prophetic act? How do we do this? And the Lord showed me, he said, we are going to build a human altar of covenant. To bless the First Nations people. So I turned to the team. I said, guys, this is what the Holy Spirit is saying. And he showed us what to do. We all got on our knees and we locked arms in unison in a circle. And I said, Lord, right now, we ourselves, uh, the, the white men and the First Nations that are here. I pray, Lord, right now we lock arms in unity. And we say that we bless this land, we bless this region, we bless the First Nations people of this region. As an altar of unity and covenant, uh, to what you are doing in their lives and through their people. And Lord, as a prophetic act, we say in this time of kneeling down before you on this land. And locking arms together in unity, that this is an altar, this is an altar to you. That this issue has been healed and our lives will be the living stones. To walk out this healing that has occurred in this land. And not only will it be in this land and with us and with this First Nations people, but it will be with us wherever we go. So we pray to prayer like that. Powerful presence of the Lord. Well, I leave and then I had people in that First Nations group that weren't there come to me. And say, that was the most beautiful, pure way, uh, for an altar of covenant, immunity. Living stones to be made for our people. You truly are one of us. We consider you one of us. And so it literally brought healing to a fence, but even took it further. That healing from a fence to a walking in unity and relationship with one another. So see, if I had ignored that, we still would have been able to accomplish spiritually somewhat. What we've been sent there to do, but not fully. So we want to pay attention to these nudges of the Lord, even when he's using us not only for people. But for situations that involve people, groups or city or region or, or our family or where we work, our workplace. So moving on, we have discovered that discernment, eh, you know, involves words that carry a lot of weight, right? Examine, test, evaluate carefully to know if a message is true or false, to know if one is. Eh, the differentiate, differentiation between good and bad, the discern, to discern spirits, right? To discern the spirits, to learn to salvage what is good and to throw out even what is useless. All of these things, right? And so that we, that we talked about, and I've just given a few testimonies, guys, like, and this is why we're doing the lesson. I'm almost done. We're at an hour. So I, we want to welcome him and invite his presence in his heart of love. So that we learn to function in this ability. And when we do, we do not cross into critical judgment, which then becomes sin in our own lives. When we start judging out of bitterness and a critical judgmental spirit instead of out of the spirit of the Lord, right? And so, Lord, right now, we just thank you for all of those who are participating today and who will watch in the future. For all of those that are reading this book. Lord, we say, give us your heart of love, Holy Spirit. We ask for a wise and a discerning heart. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, that you will increase our discernment and that we will have the language to use. When we are functioning in discernment. Lord, protect us from crossing over into being critical or judgmental. Lord, give us your language and guys, we're going to keep developing this. I'm just establishing a foundation. Lord, that you will give us language to use, you will give us wisdom on how to maneuver. That we will, we will be able to discern wisely. According to the spirit and your word and what you are saying and not what the world dictates to us. And Holy Spirit, we thank you now that you come and increase and awaken this discerning wisdom and gift of discernment. Within each of us. Cause guys, we want to be a people of breakthrough. We want to be ones that see victorious answers to prayer and victorious warfare. Yay. And so guys, thank you for coming on. I know it went an hour. I, I wanted it to, I wanted to give this foundation. And we'll be back next Thursday at the same time. And we will be then going into chapter two, where we're really, really going to talk about hearing the voice of the Lord. We're going to talk about common ways we all know, but then we're going to start talking about the seeing, feeling, hearing, sensing. How that works, even smell. I mean, is there such, do we smell? Is there, does God use the sense of smell in discernment? And we're going to start really dissecting that and we'll get deeper as we go on. I pray that this blesses you and for that person that, that even posted about what's happening within their marriage. Lord, we just pray, Father God, that every scheme of the enemy will be canceled now in Jesus' name. And Lord, we just pray right now that every false accusation, every lying spirit, we take authority over it. We say it is bound, it is gagged. We say, Lord, bring healing. Lord, to this, this marriage, Lord, give pastors that, that they're going to great wisdom. On how to maneuver in this situation. And Lord, we just speak a consuming wall of fire of protection. Around this individual and what is going on within their home and their marriage. And we bind all schemes of the enemy now in Jesus' name. Guys, I pray this was a really good just scriptural foundation and we're going to dive deeper next week. All right. Talk to you soon. Bye-bye.